Okay, um, Select Board Meeting for April ninth, two thousand nineteen. It's five thirty P M. Uh, this is Mr. Steinhardt, the C A O, and in attendance is Chairman Selectman Joseph J. Diddy, Russell S. Fox, Doug Moglen.
Oh, no nicknames tonight, that's good. I was waiting for the old nicknames to come out. All right, public comment is first. If anyone has anything they would like to say, please state your name and address for the record. Public comment, anything? None of them? We're good? We're good. All right, we'll move on. Beautiful. So first up, we'll do our minutes for April second. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Got executive?
Yep. Two sets under each paper clip.
Yes, I know, I know, I know.
You'll see March fifth and March twenty-sixth. Says the fourteenth, but it's actually March twenty-sixth.
Okay. I'll make a motion for executive minutes March fifth, two thousand nineteen, and executive minutes March twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen.
Double second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Up next is the warrant. Hold on. No, I don't. Do you have a dollar amount? For the warrant?
Hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-three cents.
Beautiful. Thank you.
You've got the amended, yeah, Doug's got the amended adjuvantary.
All right. For the amended adjuvantary.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
All right, up first is, uh, reviews petition for CPC and FinCon board changes.
Yep, these were, um, submitted to Treasure Collector's Office, Town Clerk, and they did go through the process, and they have been certified uh, by the Board of Registress to make them eligible to go on the, um, annual town meeting warrant.
All right, so what is our position here to just?
Just place them on it.
Place them on it. Okay. Any discussion? No? The town reserve request, okay, FinCon reserve request for library electrical account.
They're looking for twenty-five hundred based upon rate of expenditure for the year and last year's history.
So moved.
Is there a second? There's gotta be a second.
So.
I'll just.
Second in the commentary is we should make sure that this coming budget work session, that we update the budget line item for electricity so that we're not facing a budget shortfall this year.
We can have that dialogue.
I don't think we, did we lower that? I think we did lower that. We did lower that.
We did lower it.
Cause the year before.
Because of the improvements.
Yeah, the insulation in the A C and heat or whatever.
Right, right, and they.
How's that working?
They thought.
It doesn't look like it's working out too well.
They suggested it. We just went along.
It's all good, but it looks like it came back to haunt us.
I guess it wasn't a good suggestion.
Oh, yeah. Well, I thought it, I mean. All right, sign that. So, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Yeah, we did lower that. I think we lowered it a lot more than what they're asking.
Right.
So, there was some savings. Ah, man. Are you gonna, are you gonna clerk that?
Hold that down.
All right, so put that with it too, just to put it with it. Came out of this packet.
Yeah, make sure you bring all those things back.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
For Robin.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Approved contract between town and fire chief.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we sign this paper or are we all set? What would you want?
No, I, the other instruments will be ready at some point.
All right, and then also police chief's contract.
So moved.
Contract amendment number one.
Amendment number one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank God we didn't approve amendment number two. All right. So if I can go over there.
Just send them down.
Potential articles, special meeting, we discussed that. Oh, we actually have them. So I have approve, approval of fire department call force.
Right.
But I don't have that in front of me.
It's in the action folder.
This is the action folder.
Well, that's your fault.
Correct.
There must be a whole other action.
It's in there. It's, keep going. There it is.
Oh, right here? Yeah.
What are you doing?
Keeps the.
Trying it, clerk.
Don't, don't clerk. Okay, we're hiring committee made up for career staff and to be following the membership of the fire department, recommending following.
Different roles.
Yes, we are requesting David Avoni be appointed as firefighter. Not close, and we are also requesting Anna Crisilio, Crisco? I'll say Crisco.
Anna, Anna, Anna C.
Anna C. to be appointed as an E M T, and we are also requesting.
That's a.
Kalin?
Kalin Kingsley.
Kaylee Kingsley as E M T, and requesting Ian Schneider as photographer.
And then there's a fifth one that he wanted.
Dave Pavel.
Pavel.
Gut, Goof, Guti?
Guti, yep.
Gut.
Right now, he's, he's currently, uh, what, an E M T?
E M T.
He wants to convert him to E M T firefighter.
All right, so I need a motion.
So moved.
Can you read the names again?
Uh, yeah, sure, David. All those in favor?
That's part of it.
Yeah.
All right. Great date on it.
Yeah.
They stay this thing nine.
Two months, we're gonna have all this done. Beautiful. FinCon reserve request for police department backfill expenses.
Two of them?
Yep, there's been, there's been overtime due to coverage of staff and medical leave.
One of them is replenishing overtime, and the other one is replenishing the full-time account.
All right, so the first one.
And that's for the, uh, backfill of the sergeant out, and then also getting ready to send the person to the academy?
Yep, so one's for twenty-one thousand, which must be backfilling of the overtime, and then the other one is for ten thousand for the, uh, new officer training.
Yeah, because they'll still be at the academy when the, when Kirk comes back, and that's twenty-four weeks. And that's gonna take you into the next school year.
On each one. Is that what you think?
No, but.
All right, so twenty-one thousand?
Yep. Finance committee's okay. They, they met about this last night.
Sure.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then the second one for ten thousand, I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh.
Another one.
And you will see a new one, another one under there, under new business relating to the sprinkler system air compressor?
Yep.
That Doug filled us in about a while ago from last night.
Okay, that's five thousand?
Yeah, that's the repairs, so that's underway now.
The sprinkler system for the air compressor.
Yep. So we have to replace that because we have a dry system.
Oh, understood. All right, so I need a motion to approve.
So that's the numbers that Bobby Johnson got.
Yeah. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And of course his life and safety.
All right, perfect. It is, we are right on schedule. There's all kinds of notes here. All right. Up next is the liquor and entertainment licensing deal for Westfield Brewery. So I need a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Notice is hereby given under chapter one three eight and chapter one forty of the Massachusetts General Laws. That Sergio Bonavita has requested an amendment to his existing entertainment license for Westfield River Brewery Company, L L C, located at seven oh seven College Highway, said amendment to change from acoustics only to live music slash entertainment for inside and outside activities. All other conditions of entertainment and liquor licenses remain the same and, and is currently in effect. Description of premises, a three-story barn serving beer on first floor only, consisting of a twenty-five hundred square foot, including tasting room, consisting of two rooms and, and an outdoor seating area. The outdoor seating will be fenced in and will be visible from inside through the window and door. The farmland is included into the serving area totaling five acres exempting forest areas. This will be added to the already existing one-floor sixteen-hundred-square-foot patio deck outdoor area and two thousand square feet indoor area with three entrances and exits. Also approved for a farmer.
Series.
Series pouring permit brewery and winery to be added to the second floor consisting of twenty-five hundred square foot with three rooms. Public hearing to be held April ninth, twenty nineteen, at five forty P M. In the Select Board Conference Room at four five four College Highway, South Lake Castle, one oh seven seven. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and submit written testimony. Sergio, come on up. All right, sir, how are you this evening?
Good, how are you guys?
Good. I'm gonna read the paperwork I have in front of me.
You have copies of the, uh, current entertainment license that are right behind the hearing notice?
Yep.
So you can see what existing licenses.
Let me read this in first. From Lieutenant Landis, basically, um, he sees no more, no problem with the request for Westfield River Brewery amending the license to reflect the consistency with all other permits that have been granted by the board. Uh, I will just add that they need to be mindful when setting up for an outside venue that the sound is directed out in a way as to have the least amount of impact on your surrounding neighborhoods. Lieutenant Landis. All right, guys. So, this really is a hiccup because I believe you've had some outdoor events already, and I think we all thought the licenser covered it, but as we found out technically, it was acoustic and it really did or didn't cover up top, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything gonna change from what we've already seen from you?
No, it's just gonna be the same setup, same stage size, same tent size. I mean, we did, I'm not sure the total head counts last year, around twelve hundred, I think, was like our biggest number. Um, probably be in that ballpark again. Um, we're gonna try to do, you know, same as last year, four shows. Um, but we also have the weddings up there, and that's kind of not covered under.
Right, that niche has kind of taken off a little bit for you, which is seems nice.
Yeah, it's turned into something we didn't expect kind of out of this, so we just wanna make sure that we're abiding by everything we're supposed to, and you know, we always notify Sergeant Landis whenever we're, or Lieutenant Landis now, whenever we're gonna be up there, you know, so he understands, cause we have the parking issues, so we're always parking across the street, so we're always notifying them to make sure, hey, this is what's going on, these are the weekends, this is the size we expect, and then he tells us how many people we need.
That's, that's already, that is required under the liquor license?
Yeah.
There's a full provision about their required communication with the police department?
Yeah.
Yeah, you've done.
Bobby is the supervisor in liquor licensing.
I've actually done some events up there, um, for you guys, and prior to that, I wasn't even able or allowed to get up there because your security is so tight.
Yeah.
So, it is impressive, it is impressive that, uh.
Security's good then.
I didn't have my license on me, so I wasn't going anywhere.
Yeah.
Literally.
It was a test.
It was a test.
I wasn't, it's just.
But it's all good. I mean, that's great to see. It's great to see that it's actually being followed.
Yeah, we're tough.
Cause there's been a million times, not you, but in this town where things haven't been followed and.
There's too many people to take chances with anything, so we have a staff, it's not a rotating staff, it's a permanent staff that's there. They know how I do things.
Yeah.
We don't mess around.
He was his own father-in-law that wouldn't let me off. So, it was, it was cute, and that's, and that's, and I'm, I actually, I was impressed.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was, uh, it was good. Okay, is anyone here to speak in favor of the change in hours? Please state your name and address for the record. They must be all against you. All right, is anyone here to speak against the change in hours? Please state your name.
Also changing the entertainment license.
Yeah, it doesn't say that here, though. Anyone to speak against the change of hours and entertainment license? Please state your name and address for the record. Okay, so now general discussion amongst us.
I think it's run very smoothly. You've worked with the town, we appreciate that. Uh, we like to see businesses successful, a recreational community, and, uh, hey, knock on wood, everything's going smooth. I don't have any problems with it.
Sir?
No, they've done an exemplary job up there, and I'll just put on the record that I think I did the last time you were here that he's a tenant in a property owned by a company that's controlled by owner of my employer, but I don't see any issue with me acting on this.
Like I said, I've done events up there in the past, and it's, you know.
Right.
It's the same theory. Luckily, the quality of music is decent. I think if the quality of music sucked, he'd probably have some complaints. But, you've had some great, great music up there.
Yeah.
I know someone had come to me, and that's, it probably precipitated some of this, I, you know, someone had come back to me and asked me about what was going on up there, and I said, you know, I don't recall, and I'll look into it, and we did look into it, and it was for acoustic, so it probably precipitated this process, which is fine, just making it right, right?
Yeah, we just didn't know. I mean, we tried to go out and get.
Well, you came in front of us every time, and we've approved it. No one ever really looked back to see.
At the verbiage, it was, you know, just that it said acoustic, and, you know, we went ahead and got the approval from you guys to have the stuff up on the farm.
No, 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 absolutely.
Yeah.
That's what we're saying, yeah.
But we, we've been attracting like nationally touring bands and, you know, people that play the whole East Coast and the whole West Coast sometimes, and they're not, you know, huge names, but they're draws for people in that industry, so it's, it's a cool site and it's a cool town. That's why people wanna come here. You don't see towns that are left like this anymore.
No, you're right about that. All right, so I need a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any more discussion about the, the change in the entertainment slash hours and music?
Yeah, it's, this is a minor thing.
Right, just tells me I'm supposed to do that. I hear Cindy Pemberton behind me screaming at me.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
The amendments.
The amendments.
For the entertainment license.
To the entertainment license.
So before I go further, is this when we talk about the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary beer choice? You're gonna come up with something for us?
I've, I'm on board. I was waiting.
Before we vote on this whole thing?
That's what I'm saying, we just stopped, so.
No pressure.
No pressure, no pressure at all.
I'm a hundred percent on board. I wanna make a beer for everybody. Uh, I was told by some people, just, uh, wait till I was spoken to, is what I was told.
You've just been spoken to.
The North Palm beer was good.
Yeah, it did well. It did great. So I mean, you know, just let me know what we need to do for you guys, and we'll make it happen.
Yeah, we'll definitely reach out.
The, the two-hundred-and-fiftieth committee will reach out to you officially.
They really will.
I was told to just shut my mouth and wait, so.
Well.
It's all good.
I'll do it.
They will reach out to you eventually.
Great.
Wonderful, so.
Awesome.
You made a motion?
I made a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a great night, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Just sign the ad.
Sign the ad.
Okay.
Draft the new ones.
Yep, understood. All right. Must have been sent last time. Two eight sixteen. Uh, take that, we'll put this with.
Yeah.
Put that whole packet.
Yep, got it.
Thank you, clerk. Uh, this can go over the two. All right, so that is everything under, uh, agenda. Old business, we have ConCom L P P input for Suffield.
Yep, Dennis has, uh, been working on that, and I think he had some input with Doug today, and myself and Melissa Max, so they're, they're working on some refined language so that the, um, both the Conservation Commission can be satisfied, and the first selectman from Suffield can be satisfied with what she is gonna issue to her citizens that are affected by that process.
I'm gonna write her a cover letter.
Wonderful.
Tonight at the, uh, C R C meeting. And let her review it.
Oh, you're gonna see her there tonight?
Yeah, tonight, right?
Yeah.
Once you get back in touch with Dennis.
Well, yeah, they're gonna be there too.
Oh.
Yeah. It's why we're meeting now, so they can go there.
Okay, anything else under old business?
Uh, just a follow-up on that, the, uh, we had mentioned that there was some events happening at the Senior Center.
Oh, how'd that go?
Uh, what we're trying to do is.
My well went right today.
Is, uh, we were looking at different.
They're playing cards, I was told.
Well, we're looking at different things.
Some improvements.
And, uh, we had a, the C A O, Cindy and I had a discussion this morning, along with, uh, Paula LeBlanc, the president of the, uh, Council on Aging.
Yep.
So, we, uh, are gonna probably put forth an idea to amend the budget to, uh, see if we couldn't afford a few more hours, so we, at our budget, uh, work session tomorrow, I can bring those figures.
They already have it in there. We're just gonna reroute their money.
Okay.
So. It, uh.
So will those parties have to wait till that comes into effect before?
No, she's.
The mayhem continues or?
Cindy has already tried to appease.
Okay.
Uh, she's, uh, achieved that, I believe with two groups, but now we have, uh, had one group that, uh, went to a different venue.
Oh.
And now we, today we learned, uh, maybe a fourth group that's not really all senior citizens from, and people from Southwick, uh, might be going to a different venue, so, um.
That's fine too.
But we're, we're trying to keep everybody calm, cool, and collective, and talking, and see if we can't work it all out.
Well, those issues, um, the CHA person or the Council on Aging is gonna facilitate a meeting with those groups to work that out.
Right.
Okay.
Right, so. But we can go over the figures tomorrow.
Yep, that's fine. Anything else for old business?
Well, I think that's enough for tonight.
All right, under new business, I have the, uh, um, must be the potential articles. So are we gonna add anything to it?
No. Based upon, uh, what I gave you, the listing. You know, for the special would be the snow and ice deficit, because if you don't liquidate the liability before June thirtieth, you have to add it on to the fall tax recap sheet, which affects the tax rate, and as a general rule, this town has always liquidated the tax, the, uh, deficit before June thirtieth.
Okay.
Um, there's no union agreements that are due this year, but there's some non-union cost of living adjustments. Um, supplemental transfers to backfill medical and F M L A issues in vacancies. Now, some of that stuff you took here for the police chief under a FinCon reserve, but there's gonna be other expenses that may relate to um, substitute clerks and maintenance people and floaters, you know, in this building for, um, backfills, cause you know, you, you are aware who is out.
Yeah, no, we understand.
And then, uh, some more repairs to town hall, um, another annual contribution to the, uh, post-employment employee benefits, which is called the O P E B, which is, that's been a, it's a trust fund deposit we do every year. We've been doing it for years. And then any one-time purchases that you might wanna move from the F Y twenty budget process uh, to, to address before June thirtieth. Um, so that's really what it looks like right now. Uh, the town accountant is, uh, working to finalize, uh, these issues.
Yep.
And then the, uh, annual town meeting will be the recurring articles to operate and fund the town government, which are all the housekeeping issues. You know, the voting of the, uh, short-term borrowings, approving the town reports, selectmen's authority to appoint minor officials, which is everybody below the selectman. Um, borrowing authorizations are gonna be decided by yourselves in the, uh, Finance Committee through the F Y twenty budget process. Uh, the annual budget document, which is one single article requested by the Finance Committee. Any revolving accounts that have adjustments in their annual spending limits. Um, Community Preservation Committee articles for operations, which is your admin account, your fund reserves for your three categories, and any of the projects that they've done, they have submitted their warrant articles to that effect. All warrant articles are subject to town council modifying them to make them approved to form in statute.
Yeah.
School budget in, um, borrowing, um, let's see, and any of their borrowing vote. Um, citizen petitions, you got two of those that have been certified. We just, you went over that earlier. Um, zoning bylaws, I know the planning board has, uh, has to remove two moratoriums related to um, the marijuana issues from last year, that legislation, and then there's a zone change coming up that you've already referred to the planning board?
Yes.
Um, easements for any water and sewer projects if necessary that go through Public Works, the town engineer, and the town attorney. Uh, pilot agreements, payments in lieu of taxes, or other incentive agreements. I know Doug has been working on a warehouse uh, project possibility. Um, recycling contracts for renewal for the materials recycling firm, which is the M R F, and this is the facility that's managed and run by Mass D E P. And, uh, cause that has to be done as a warrant article change, cause that's coming up for renewal. And then any articles determined by the town attorney or town auditor that are necessary for local or permissive legislation that, uh, have to be done as a matter of, um, requirements placed upon local governments. So that's what it's looking like, like, right now, Joe.
Okay.
Okay, I can't give you an exact count on the warrant, but I'm sure it'll be the usual, you know, six to ten pages for the annual.
That covers everything that we.
Yeah, and I asked Carl to reserve some space on the warrant for the, uh, water and, and or sewer easement if necessary, and also a, a pilot, more likely a T I F, depending on developments with that, and the timing of all that coming together.
Right.
Given the, the timeframe for town meeting, to be able to get that on the warrant.
Okay.
So that represents where we are right now.
All right. Anything?
Uh, I went to a meeting with Michelle Hill Friday, Mass Municipal, had a legislative meeting, uh, in Springfield. And it's funny, uh, the, uh, recycling, uh, was a, a big topic.
Yeah.
I think I mentioned to you, uh.
Right.
Uh, Mayor Sarno was there describing, uh, how much this was gonna cost the city of Springfield. And, uh, he did come up with the idea, the same idea we did, we'll just mix all the trash together.
Right.
D E P was there to tell him, no, you're, you're not gonna do that, so. Um, if in fact, uh, what the, um, Mass Municipal Association is, is working on, or, I, excuse me, what Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is working on, is trying to see if they can't reach out and try to stimulate some interest of local businesses doing recycling, or regional recycling, because, uh.
You mean to use it as a raw material?
Right.
Or make a raw material.
Or make a raw material. So that's, that's how they're gonna approach it, and then Mass Municipal is, is contemplating working with the legislators to legislation concerning, you know, for example, they use the example, Amazon shipping all the thing in cardboard, you know, and putting the cost back onto Amazon, and I E. putting the cost back onto the consumer. Uh, so, there's two different approaches that, uh, they're looking at.
I mean, this, Joe, this goes back to, um, Randy's discussions in the past couple of weeks, where, you know, recycling, we used to get some pretty good dollars for it. Now, we're getting minimal dollars per ton, and actually down east, they're actually getting to the point where they're paying forty to seventy dollars per ton to remove the recycling, which is getting close to being like the, the cost of trash.
Yep.
Well, actually, it's gonna cost more than the trash. It's gonna cost more than the trash.
Yes, it is.
So, but, uh, but you, you have to continue to keep, um, you know, the refuse separated from recyclables. It is part of the state regulations.
Right, and that was pointed out to Mayor Sarno.
And essentially, it, it, one could argue, it's an unfunded mandate under the Proposition Two and a Half Legislation of nineteen eighty-one, which sets forward, uh, determinations about that are made by the State Auditor's Office under the Division of Local Mandates.
And that's what I told.
Someone is gonna be asking for a determination on that.
And that's what I told Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and they said they would look into it.
That's a tougher road to hoe, cause for years it was the other way around, like the legislation enabled towns to rake it in. Now, the economic conditions surrounding that have changed.
Well, because what happened was they started doing single.
Well, that's what killed everything.
Right.
Absolutely.
Right.
Absolutely.
Once you started commingling all the recyclables, then you reduce their quality.
Right, yes.
So it's convenient in other towns, but that has, it's brought the demise.
Yeah.
Cause now those other Asian and other countries don't get, see a good product that's not worth it.
Nope.
And then other issues, of course, were the rail system. Senator Lesser was there, so that, so we spent quite.
He wants his rail trail back?
Well, I, I, actually, former Mayor Markle was there too, and, uh, they were both.
You still think the train runs weird.
Abdicating, uh, high-speed rail to bring people from Boston that live in Massachusetts but work in, uh, in Boston. So, there were several other things that Mass Municipal was, you know, going over in, in Pioneer Valley. But it was, it was a good discussion. Uh, we were there for about two hours, so.
Well, thank you for.
And Michelle Hill was, picked up the information she needed, uh, concerning her, uh, position.
Yeah.
And I found out that she's going to be the president of that association, uh, next year.
Wonderful.
Because the gentleman from Springfield, uh, I guess Michelle's the vice president now, and the. Cause the gentleman from Springfield, uh, I guess Michelle's the vice president now, and the.
Treasury Collectives.
Right, and the gentleman from Springfield was the president, and I, I met him, and, uh, Michelle's taken over, so.
Yeah, she's.
I think that's quite, quite an honor.
That's quite an honor for her.
For, for, uh, Southlake.
Absolutely. She also did, um, was a key player in one of those honor flights this past weekend too, to DC. With all women, um.
Rhode Island, out of Rhode Island.
Out of Rhode Island, but it was an all-female honor flight from Rhode Island to DC for the day, and that got a lot of.